... can be passed. They will formally participate in our summer jazz camp occurring in July. We hope you enjoy this selection, everyone. Now we begin.
Ready? You guys are ready?
Yeah!
One, two, three, out! Thank you for that amazing, amazing jazz. Let's give a little round of applause. I feel a whole lot cooler just listening to music.
Yeah!
It'll be going through my head all meeting. I love it. I love it. All right, moving on to item, uh... Wait for Ed to come up. We move on to item number four of the March 28-23 Monthly Board Meeting Minutes. The Monthly Board Meeting Minutes. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Adorno.
Yes.
This is Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
This is Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving on to item number five, the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Aubrey Johnson.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
For the month of April, we have enrolled 9,502 students. In March, we had four cases of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, 220 suspensions. Our staff attendance was at 94% and student attendance at 91%. There were 11 positive cases for employees and 11 positive cases for students. This month nationally, we pause to recognize important school district staff. We recognize our school librarians, our assistant principals, and paraprofessionals. And tomorrow, we will recognize administrative, will be administrative professional to that day. I just want to note that their tireless efforts in ensuring daily operations of our schools, supporting both teachers and students, and maintaining a safe and positive learning environment are truly commendable. We recognize their hard work and accomplishments and value their tireless efforts and dedication to our students. Their contributions to the school community is invaluable. We appreciate all that you do and the impact that they have on the lives of our students. I am extremely grateful for their guidance and expertise, and I know that many of our students and staff feel the same way. Also, this month, which is recognized as Autism Awareness Month, in celebration of this month of autism, several of our schools engage in activities that brought awareness to our students while allowing us to continue our commitment to supporting the needs of all of our New Brunswick Public School students. Our students were able to participate in activities that required collaboration, unity, and team building, helping our students to better understand one another. This past Saturday, April 22nd, through our partnerships with the New Jersey Black Woman Physician Association, New Brunswick Tomorrow, and the Middlesex County Health Department, we hosted another vaccine and flu clinic at Red Shaw. First doses, second doses, and boosters were available to students, parents, and staff. Flu vaccines and lead screenings were also available. In total, we administered seven COVID vaccines, one flu vaccine, and three lead screenings that were done. Again, we thank all of our community partners, testing labs, and pharmacies who partnered with the district to make testing and vaccination available to our staff and families. Our next COVID vaccine clinic is scheduled for Saturday, May 20th. Our upcoming job fee, excuse me, is scheduled for Thursday, May 4th, for all district positions. Please visit any of our district's social media platform, Twitter, Facebook, and our district website for more information. And lastly, the work of the All In for New Brunswick Task Force has begun. Last night, I held the first meeting with district administrators, teachers, students, parent, community partners, and local officials. We discussed strategies to charting a path to recovery and innovation for all students, which includes the work of building a better approach to public education. We will work to address complex problems our children and students are facing within and outside of school while thriving socially and emotionally. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, for those great remarks. Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Adorno.
Yes.
This is Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
This is Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to number six, the Student Representative Report, David Ariano.
David. Good evening. I would like to begin by congratulating precious Camaro and Victor Adeyeri for receiving the GMC Sportsmanship Award last week. New Brunswick Athletics also earned the GMC Sportsmanship Award for the Blue Division. Congratulations to Jaden Perez and Amy Marino for winning the New Brunswick High School Middlesex Unsun Hero Award. These students were recognized for making the school a better place simply for being a part of it. On March 30th, our high school's National Honor Society Chapter had its blood drive. This annual event gathers faculty and students from the entire school to give back to the community by donating blood. Special thanks to Alyssa Esposito and Emily Ralphs, our chapter's advisors, for putting this event together. Upon returning to school after spring break, our New Brunswick High School hosted its last spirit week of the year, starting with Stuffed Animal Day on Monday and concluding with our Spring Pet Rally on Friday. This lively event settles the friendly rivalry between our vividly green juniors and our bright pink seniors. This very fun controlled chaos concluded with relay races, puff balloons, and whipped cream to the face of our class advisors. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, David, for the thorough report. Moving on to item number seven, the Facilities Committee Report, Mr. Edward Spencer.
Yes, Mr. President. The Facility Committee met on April 19th. New Blanquita v. Volante Community School update. Atlantic Engineering is continuing to provide quality control, testing, and inspection services for brick and mortarwork. They are also concluding the last concrete inspections related to the construction of the loading dock. All steel inspections are completed. Approximately 95% of the windows are now in place. Approximately 90% of the interior wall framing is completed, and 80% of the gypsum wall board has been installed. Installation of the grid for the coastal tile ceilings has started. Electrical and plumbing work is progressing on schedule. The electrical switchgear has arrived on site and has been installed. The remaining heating and air conditioning equipment has arrived and has also been installed. We have paid $35.6 million to date. We're expecting the April 2023 invoice to be approximately $3.7 million, which will be put us, which will put us at a total of, to date, of $39.3 million. We remain on schedule for completion date of August 2023. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer, for the thorough report. The Athletic Committee Report, Mr. Ivan. Ivan Adama.
Thank you, Mr. President. Halfway through the spring season, we're halfway through the spring season, and we have over 258 athletes on all our sports rosters. This is a 22% increase over the previous school year. For all of our spring athletes, they have a cumulative GPA of 3.06 and a 3.12 from the last full school year. These numbers are up from 2.9% and 3.04 from the 2021-2022 school year. This year, athletes have increased school participation with the addition of esports as well as girls' flag football. The girls' flag football team lost their last two games versus South Brunswick and Monroe, which came down to the very end. Both South Brunswick and Monroe are in their second season of flag football, but our girls never gave up and played well till the end. The next game will be, will be both played on May 5th versus Piscataway and South Hudson at Piscataway High School. The boys and girls' track teams will compete this week on Thursday and Friday at the Penn Relays, racing against other high schools from around the world. Lastly, the New Brunswick Athletic Hall of Fame will host their annual Hall of Fame induction banquet on May 20th. For more information, reach out to Athletic Director Garrett Conker. That concludes my report. I give reconciliation for March.
Right. Is there a motion to accept the reconciliation?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Adorno.
Yes.
This is Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
This is Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving on to item number nine, the Curriculum Policy Committee Report, Jennifer Sevilla.
Some of the curriculum policy committee notes that I have, we made on April 18th. In honor of Earth Day, which happened on Friday, April 21st, 21st, I'm sorry, our students and staff across our school celebrated through various educational events and activities that spread awareness about protecting our planet. Parents were also invited to partake in fun activities with their children, and we extend our thanks to district administrators and staff who supported this important cause. I think that there were also some pictures and some posts about that as well. In terms of policies and regulations, Policy Regulation 5200, attendance, it's revised code addresses, abort locally determinate excuse, and unexcused absences for the purposes of truancy, student conduct, promotion, retention, and award of course credit, and has been revised to include several additional options for a board to excuse absences. Policy 8140, student enrollment, has been updated to reflect the changes in administrative code that includes the newly created definition, quote-unquote, "days" in membership, which replaces the definition of average daily attendance. Also, the requirement to keep separate registers depending on a student's grade or classification has been removed. In addition, Regulation 8140, Enrollment Accounting, which is a new regulation, the regulation provides a definition with the previous days in, days of membership and the requirements for the data collection process for the application for state schooling that assigns the data collection responsibilities to a superintendent or designate or, and stu-, I'm sorry, school business administrator, which is also the board secretary or someone who might be designated to do that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much for that, that report. We'll move on to item number 10, the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey. Pleased to report that in the 46 years of the commission, we've not had, we have a record number of students, and as you recall, the students, the districts utilize the commission based on, on the quality of services. So the services at the commission are higher than ever. The president of Middlesex College is now a non-voting member, Dr. McCormick, of the board, and we've gone through a very extensive process, and at the next meeting, I will announce, as we know, as I mentioned, Mark Finkelstein will be retiring, but at the next meeting, I will announce the new superintendent of the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey. And that is my report. Now we'll move on to public comments. Mr. General, do we have anyone who's signed up for a public comment?
Yes, Ms. April Nicholas, you're in attendance.
Good evening, Ms. Nicholas.
Hi, good evening.
Mr. Speaker, the mayor of the borough?
Yes. My name is April Nicholas, 143 City and Street, in New Brunswick. So first question that I have for the board is with regards to the ongoing issue of school safety, after the incident in January with an adult woman forging illegal work to get into the schools, the district said that it would review its employment procedures to stop that from happening in the future. And that was about three months ago now, so I'm curious if there's any update on that, what new procedures, and what changes have been made.
I apologize, I didn't hear much of what you said. I didn't understand it. You would understand what she's saying?
Do I need to speak louder or slower?
There is no procedure in terms of state code in regards to registration, the process. However, as I stated before, that we will take a look to see if there's anything that we can do. At this time, the only thing that we can see where we can strengthen is trying to identify, better identify any type of falsified documents. So we need to still work on that, but other than that, our system was able to identify within three days the individual, but we will continue to refine our processes as we move forward.
Well, I think it was four days, so it's just, you know...
Yeah, I misspoke. It was actually three. Initially, I stated four. So four, three days? Okay.
I see. So based off of what you said, it sounds like you're planning to take a look at what you can strengthen. Has that not happened yet?
I believe we have a strong system. Unfortunately, this was an isolated case. We register many parents throughout the years. What we have to take a look at is ways people are falsifying document and have a better eye to determine that. That's what I'm stating.
Okay. The next comment that I have is I just find it to be an odd choice to have the board meeting on the same date as the election for the New Brunswick Board of Education, especially since there's, you know, some important items on the agenda tonight. Just curious if the board has any commentary on why that scheduling decision was made.
No comment.
Okay. And I do want to say that I see that item G on the consent agenda allocates resources to climate education, so I do want to say that that's very important, and I appreciate that that is on the agenda.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Mr. General, is there anyone else on the list?
No, sir.
Okay. Hearing that, we'll move to item number, oh, number 12, the President's Report. Just want to reiterate, I actually had heard today some research that was talking about Facebook, and when Facebook was first rolled out, it was rolled out to different colleges at different times, and they did an analysis of it, and they found the mental health challenges as Facebook rolled out. So that was clear, clear evidence that the social media that we have now is at least one of the items addressing some of the emotional and other challenges that our young people and not-so-young people face. And so, so we all there, as the parents, as the community, as the board, as the teachers, as the staff, need to be really vigilant and understand the impact of social media on, on, on what it's doing to really all of us. So that's just, I thought that was just, just very interesting, just again, continual reinforcement that social media is at the heart of this. So, you know, we need to control it a lot more than we do with the society. So with that, moving on to item number 13, the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to accept the Consent Agenda?
Before you move forward, Dr. Caldwell, I'd like to announce to the, to the board and the public that although Mrs. Seawood could not make it here physically, she is on the phone attending this meeting via...
Virtually.
Phone, virtually, through telephonic purposes. Mrs. Seawood, can I confirm your attendance? So officially for the record, Mrs. Seawood is attending the meeting for 7:27 PM. You may proceed, Dr. Caldwell.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you, Mr. General. Item number 13, is there a motion to accept the resolution? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. General.
So Mrs. Seawood, just to make sure, we have a motion and a second on all the items on the Consent Agenda. I'll now take a roll call. Mr. Adorno.
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving on to item number 14, are there any public comments on the superintendent's contract? Only just public comments on the superintendent's contract? Please state your name and address.
Charlie Cradill, New Brunswick, New Brunswick. Sorry about that. Good to be with you. I wanted to ask the first question.
Your address? Your address?
I live on Sedan Street in New Brunswick.
What number?
Do you really want me to say the number?
Yes, please.
For what purpose do you need to know the number?
Because you're no better than anyone else. We asked everyone who knew them.
Okay, I live at 143 Sedan Street. What was that to promote this hearing today?
I read, I read in the beginning, the, the advertisements in the publications.
Yeah.
And the qualified publications.
Yeah. Has this idea of renegotiating Mr. Johnson's contract, Dr. Johnson's contract, been publicly discussed before tonight? No, it was a personnel matter.
This is a personnel matter. We don't talk about specific personnel matters publicly. That's the standard of every board.
Oh, you published it in the newspaper.
No, we didn't publish that.
You did, March 17th in the Star Ledger. Yeah, but that's... Board of Ed, public hearing on superintendent's renegotiated contract. I'm just curious why you didn't bring this up at the March 28th meeting if you were planning to renegotiate the contract with the top official for the district. Dale, can I handle that?
Turn it over to Charlie.
Can you, can you pause my time if somebody's going to speak?
Yeah.
Try to speak. So per regulations, when you're... Can you pause my time if somebody else is going to speak? When the board is approving an expiring contract, first of all, by law, we don't have to publish it in a newspaper, but we did. And first you pub, first what you do is you send it to the county superintendent of schools. The county superintendent of schools reviews it, approves it, sends it back to the Board of Education. We then publicize in the newspaper more than 30 days in advance that we're going to have a public vote, public hearing on it. We did that on March 17th, so therefore, whatever the statute stated, and therefore, now, then the 30 days has passed, and we are now taking a vote on the superintendent's contract in April 25th meeting per 18A and 6A. Just for the record, this contract is not an expiring contract, right? Superintendent Johnson has another year to go. Yeah, so we advertised it, and I would tell you, if you're, if you're saying that we didn't do anything by the rules and regulations that is stated in New Jersey, that is incorrect. We followed everything we're supposed to do.
And you know the rules, Charlie.
Oh, I know them, but I'm saying, for some reason, you didn't bring this up at the last meeting, you didn't post about it on the website. What you're saying is we did the bare minimum we're legally required to do, and you also scheduled the hearing in the middle of the election. But here we are, and this is the hearing for the superintendent's renegotiated contract. Why renegotiate the contract at all if there was an extra year? Who, whose idea was this?
Charlie, you know very well, we don't talk personnel matters. We don't talk about specific personnel...
This is literally, literally a hearing on the contract.
It's not a personnel...
So why did you renegotiate the contract? Did Superintendent Johnson ask for this? Or did the board ask him? Mr. President, I can handle that.
Go ahead.
As the board attorney, it's my obligation to negotiate with... Please pause the clock. With the superintendent, and he came to me and said he would like to extend his contract. I presented the board in closed session, they were all in agreement. We negotiated the salary, I did it, I prepared the contract, and that's how it works. That's how it always works for any superintendent, and that's what we did here. And now, as General Ron, our BA, ably indicated, we followed all the protocols. But how did we get here? Dr. Johnson asked for an extension, the board, it was mutual, I'm quite sure, board had been talking to him directly, individually, but he wanted an extension, and the board obviously seemed to be well pleased with his services, and the contract was negotiated, and here we are, having a public hearing. Okay, and thank you for elaborating. I do want to note that this is a starting salary of over $267,000 per year.
What would the compensation be if the current contract remained in effect for next year?
If this current contract, it would be $260,034, right? So the current contract for next year would be a one and a half percent raise. This contract is a 3% raise, which is more in line since we just negotiated teacher contracts at three and, at over 3 and 3/4% a year. So the superintendent is actually getting 3%, while the rest of everyone else in the district has gotten 3 and 3/4% and will be getting 3 and 3/4%.
I'm, I'm sure he'll be able to get by. The issue that I want to raise is this was discussed in closed session. Which meeting was it discussed at, the February meeting or the March meeting?
I don't, I don't go home specifically.
I, I think I might recall. It was both. It wasn't discussed in the March board meeting. I, I'm not sure whether it was February or January.
Maybe February, January, January.
Because you understand that you discuss it in closed session, you come to a consensus, right? Those are private closed session minutes that aren't released into the public until those negotiations are complete. We send it to the county superintendent, they approved it, and now we advertise it, and then here we are, taking a public vote on it.
Right.
So I believe it was January, if I'm not mistaken.
That's the third time we've explained the process, Mr. Cradaville.
Well, thank you for explaining it.
But three times, three times, and so...
Yeah, well, my, my point is, you did extremely little to promote the fact that you were going to renegotiate the contract for the top official of the district, and I think the public deserves more transparency. We should have found out.
Charlie, I, I work in districts across the country. That's the practice. That's the standard practice. The standard practice, Charlie. You know that.
That's not true. That's not true. I can find you examples of other districts that are much more transparent about superintendent.
Your, your time is done, sir.
And we deserve better here. Think you should hold off?
Is there any else who'd like to make a comment?
Any other comments?
Hearing done. Is there a motion to accept?
Could move.
Second? Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who's second in the, um...
General.
Mr. Adorno.
I'm staying.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood voted yes. Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
I'm staying.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving on to item number 16, the Finance Committee Report. Ms. Diana Solis.
Thank you, Dr. Caldwell. All members of the Finance Committee, along with members of the board, had a chance to review the finance report, and I'd like a motion to approve the report.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Adorno.
Yes, I'm staying on pages six and 17.
Page six and 17. Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes, I'm staying on page 20.
Page 20. Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Resolution for closed session. I will read the resolution, and we will vote. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 10:4 to 6 provides that certain matters of the public body may be discussed in closed session, and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, personnel matters, matters of attorney-client privilege, now therefore be resolved that the aforesaid subjects shall be discussed in closed session by this Board of Education, administrative staff, and the minutes of said closed session discussion will be made available to the public when the reasons for the nondisclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act no longer exist. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Adorno.
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
We are in closed session.
Thank you very much.